Being that it's seven oh one and we're all here, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Sound good?
Yep.
Okay. Approval of regular minutes. You guys have anything? Cause I do.
I do, yeah. So under um under business. Uh Squire Road. Um, I'd like to remove the statement. At the end, it says Kim Tester added that people should not walk. Should not to walk in the middle of the road. Um, I didn't actually say that. I I was telling, I know, because I want Squire Road people to not think that I am accusing them of walking in the middle of the road. I was telling a story about when Barbara had sent the um uh a message out to people. So I think it was just misconstrued. So I was not accusing them of doing that. So I'd just like to remove that sentence, since I didn't say it.
No problem.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And then I do just, just a couple typos. You know, uh, under under short-term rentals in town. It should say, the last sentence, Patrick Roy suggested continuing this at a future meeting. And then I just have one more. Julia, good with that so far?
Everything good.
Okay, Hodge Park update, uh, middle of the pack. It says a new sign will be purchased. To remedy instead of purchase. That's it.
Okay, I had more in the facts on Squire Road. It says Patrick Roy also reported the traffic and speed study was conducted on Squire Road over a fifteen day period. It was actually uh over a month. Uh, it was from August first to September fourth. That's all I have.
Okay.
With those two revisions and two typos, are we good with approval?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll suck it.
All in favor? Aye. Uh, tax collectors report. We have a couple of requests for refunds to due to to overpayment when it looks like it was paid twice. So the total is very high this month, four thousand five hundred twenty-one ninety-six, uh, but they are actually legit to overpayments to pro-rated. Uh reversal. So I'm looking for a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax refunds.
Uh, second.
All in favor? Aye. Great, alright. Um, alright, I think it's only us. Uh, do we have any communications from the public? Julie?
Oh, you were it.
Okay. Um, alright, boards and selectmen, uh, commissions and board appointments. We have conservation is first. Uh, vacancy for uh expiring six thirty twenty-three. This conservation commission uh position is still vacant. Uh, they do not have a person. Uh, I've been assured that they will have one next month. Uh, we have a new one on here. Um, our month is Board of Finance. Uh, vacancy expiring eleven sixteen two thousand twenty-seven. Um, that is a newer position job. John Hopkins uh has resigned from the board. Um, so that they are going to be soliciting currently and we are promoting it. Um, so that
You know, to say about John, he did an awesome job. Hate to see him leave. Great guy.
I agree a hundred percent. Working hand in hand with him on the Board of Finance. I have so so much respect for that man and he is a loss for our town. So I absolutely agree.
Yep.
Um, the next is uh Library Board of Directors vacancy expiring eleven twenty-one two thousand twenty-three. They have uh and selected uh Tova Martin. So I'm looking for that nomination.
Oh, great.
Great.
Yep. Got a lot of wonderful things for the town.
Motion to uh appoint Tova to the Board of what? Board of Library Directors, right, or?
The Library Board of Directors, correct.
Okay.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye. Well done. I think she's definitely gonna add a lot. I agree.
Yeah. Glad she's getting involved.
Yep, alright. Um, okay, on to business. Um, so Squire Road, um, you know, when we uh we the la- our last meeting was the day before we actually started it. Um, we actually started at the Wednesday after and we finished it the following Thursday. So a week and a day. Um, I think the guys did an amazing job. Um, there are two parts of it that are still waiting. Um, we're waiting on the pavement. Uh, and we're also waiting on permanent guardrails and those are gonna wait for a little while. There's a big backorder on that. Um, and I started pricing out the guardrails because they came in a little higher than I thought. Um, but we are gonna do exactly what we said with the wooden rails. Uh, we were able to open up the road by putting temporary uh boards in uh just to keep it safe. Um, but just hands down to Public Works Crew. Um, they are they continue to amaze me and I'm glad we can do what we're doing for them uh in the equipment that we're, you know, that we're I know they're excited about it. So uh, that was just a huge kudo, kudos to Butch and the crew. Uh, they did truly an amazing job.
Yeah, it was great. You know, I know Russ, you drive by there all the time, but I was able to go by periodically and stop in and got to be there in the first couple of days and just witnessed the uh fun of demolition. Great big machines. It was awesome. And then going by at the end. So it was wonderful to see.
Yep.
But they they did a great job, but you, Patrick. You're the leader. It's because of you. You've energized those guys and this town is gonna be better for it. I'm so proud of you and what you did. And and from a wetland standpoint. Uh, I went out and they did a great job from a wetland standpoint. They did everything. I I was worried about the 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 culverts are in is deep. Uh, they they straightened the path so the water's not going against the bank, which would cause problems down the road. But you're the one, you're you're right there with them, Patrick. And I know they love you and I love you and Kim loves you too. So
I totally agree.
Great thing. It's a great thing.
And it, you know, honestly, and to to look at it and to go back, um, it does. And it it means a lot for you guys to say that because it does mean a lot to me. Um, I know what we've saved by not having you know, other contractors and we know what a fiasco that can be. Um, this is all in our control. And I've been, I, let's let's face it, I could not do it without the talents down there. They they are guiding me in this all direction. So, um, job well done.
But you energize them.
Absolutely. I've seen it too. Yep, yep.
Um, and I'm having fun at the same time. So that's
Right.
Even better. I I'm not good in the office. I'm better out there. So keep letting me do that and uh I'm good with that. I'm totally good with that. Um, okay, so you, uh, as you guys know, we've been trying to uh get a part-time officer for a while. Uh, we've been kinda uh working with Matt, keeping his ear to the ground. Um, last week, I uh Matt and I interviewed a man named David Buck. Uh, who had currently worked uh as a police officer from two thousand and four, from two thousand and four to two thousand and eight. He was in the town of Easton. Um, kind of a similar demographic to Roxbury. Since two thousand and eight, he has been a police officer for the city of Meriden.
Hmm.
Um, he lives in Southbury and he's looking to uh retire and take on more shifts. Uh, so he can be closer to home. He's starting a farm with his wife. Um, and they have animals and uh we talked about flexibility. Um, on hours, uh, maybe early in the morning, late at night when we can do stuff and he was uh very positive about it. Um, I think he's a great candidate. So uh with your permission, guys, I'd like to uh continue this conversation with him and bring him on board. When he is ready. Um, this will be, he's still gonna be into Meriden uh till the end of the year. Um, and he's gonna have to work towards that. Um, again, this is a great thing of somebody that already brings the training, already brings the skill set uh to it. Um, but uh it'll definitely pick up some of the shifts that we're missing uh in the budget this year.
When will he, will he start um part-time for, I mean, will he start periodically before he retires or?
Correct, correct. Yeah, he's looking to be this as a transition and then he'll be able to pick up more hours uh after the beginning of the year.
So when would he begin, uh, when would he begin then if he? Oh, first I guess I I'm in favor.
Okay, yeah. I mean, like I said, I have to continue this conversation, but I have to bring it before the board first.
Hired a guy.
Yeah, okay. Uh, he honestly, very, very great guy, very professional.
Yeah.
I I I will say, just from my experience of working in inner city and, you know, living in Roxbury and working in Roxbury. Um, it's nice to have somebody that's got both those elements because, you know, he brings the intellect of what a crime area looks like also. So he knows the signs to look out for. Um, and you know, he, I I I think he's gonna make great addition. So uh I can, I can reach out to him again and uh he made it sound like, you know, within a couple of weeks or so, he could start picking up shifts. Then we can transition him into more roles, again, picking up more roles in the beginning of the year.
And I'd like to just say something about the police presence and I think, you know, it's been lacking. Um, and you know, there's one reason for it, but I I think overall, it's been disappointing, you know, that we haven't seen people out on some of the major roads. I know that, you know, the kids are taken care of at the school. Um, but in terms of, you know, some of these other locations, it would be really great to have this other body out there so that we can, um, you know, work to give out some tickets and get people so that they really think about where they're going and how fast they're going and the trucks. And I was shaking my finger at a truck this morning.
I know, I
At the bottom of, um, I was at um Wellers Bridge and sixty-seven, I put my window down and I shook my finger and they said I have, I have a local delivery. I said, well, that's okay then, you know, but I, he had no idea who I was, but he knew I meant business.
Who is this crazy?
Exactly. And I think they shouldn't have the thing on the side of my truck, you know, that says on a Roxbury.
I I the serious part of that conversation, I agree completely. I did have that conversation with uh with David. Um, and I and I was corrected because we, well, I mean, we can't actually tell, uh, and I've been advised. Uh, we can't tell someone to write tickets. We can't leave that as something
Right.
to put out there. They have to use their own judgment. Uh, but I did have a conversation about that, uh you know, oppression of control that we've always talked about and you have to be present. And I talked about our cut-through roads of Squire and Falls Road and Wellers Bridge and how, you know, we do have a lot of cut-through traffic and there needs to be presence there. People need to realize that um there's a consequence to speeding in our town because this is our town. So, you know, it was a good conversation. So, you know, at least uh hopefully, you know, he'll he'll definitely be out there, you know, from what it sounds.
And you know, I wanna just clarify, so I'm not just, I think it's important, when I say give out tickets, my point is to enforce the law.
Agreed.
And that's really what I mean. And I'm just using the term give out tickets. I don't care if they, if nobody gives out a ticket, that means everyone is following rules and doing
Agreed, agreed.
If they're not, I'd like them sure that they're actually stepping up and doing what they need to do.
Just this morning, there was somebody easily seventy miles an hour, you know, tap of the brakes in front of the green and just flew and it was a big B-eight Ram and the thing sounded just like a train coming down the mountain from uh Maplebank. And I just stood out there waiting because I just wanted to see who this person was that was flying in this, in this truck. Because I thought it was something much bigger, but it was just very fast. Um, that needs to stop.
Yes.
Um, okay, uh
Let's hope it's not one of us.
Then slow down, Ross.
No, very cognizant. And a lot of, a lot of my, my staff who drive from New Milford to Sandy Hook to our office, I warn them. I do.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Um, okay, so next on the agenda is the Excel accessory dwelling opt-out. Kim, do you wanna go forward with that? Because I don't have much information.
Yep. Um, so on Thursday night, they had what's uh, they've reinstituted or the Northwest Hills Cog reinstituted the fifth Thursday event where um planning and zoning people come together to uh hear some, somebody talk and give us information. So this time it was attorney Mike uh Ziska, who's a really well-known land, he's great. So he went through this um Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine because there are some deadlines coming up and he wanted to make sure that we were all on board and Roxbury was well represented. We have four members of zoning at the meeting, which was great. So we, um, the accessory dwelling unit, um, the state is requiring that every um, primary dwelling be allowed or uh be expected to be allowed to put in accessory apartment. Roxbury already allows two. So that part of it is not an issue. And and so we kind of just kind of brushed past that. But what um, what attorney Ziska said was that there are a lot of little pieces to that legislation that we will lose control over if we don't opt out of it. So, and I went back to some of the information that uh our attorney Gail had uh given us and it's a couple of statements that she had copied from the um Public Act. And at the parentheses, she said, need to determine what this means. So he said the same thing. He said, there are quite a few, there are like two or three different pieces in that, that they don't really know what is meant by it. And so he said, he strongly recommended that the towns just opt out of it and then you'll have a complete control over managing accessory dwellings. And so we went, alright, well, that's smart. We will, we will go forward with that. So on our agenda uh for zoning for this coming month, next week, we have it listed. We, I've already written uh, uh, you know, the the um the bit that will go in uh for the public hearing. And so we're gonna, that will go to the commission. The commissioner will decide if they accept that. And then we'll have a public hearing in November, which then could put this on to our agenda for December. And what does not need and what Ziska said, it does not need to go to a town meeting for a vote that the Board of Selectmen can just accept it. So then we'll be done for December with this because as of January first, we will have no say. Once that comes and if we don't officially opt out, then we're stuck with the regulation with all that ambiguity that is on, it's totally unclear.
I make a motion. Is there a motion that needs to be made?
No, I don't think so.
Not for us yet, as I understand this.
No, we cannot, you can't opt out yet until it goes through zoning. So zoning
Okay, okay.
Yes, it's on our agenda for October. We go to public hearing in November. And then it comes comes back to this board for a vote in December. And then we just have enough time to do that, you know, so that we do it before the deadline of January first. But I just wanted you guys to be aware of uh what that was. Because we opted out of the parking and that's the, I believe, I'm gonna go through the regulation again just to make sure that's the only other one, but
Well, thank you for being on that and bringing this to our attention. I think we all are in agreement on, we wanna keep control of our town.
Yes.
And we don't want to tell, someone telling us what to do. So
And that's a Yeah, you're welcome. Because that's, you know, that's two dwelling units per lot that we would lose control over if we didn't opt out. So that's a biggie.
Correct. Alright, well, um, I'll probably try and get onto that zoning meeting also. So uh, thank you.
Okay, alright.
Alright, awesome. Anything else that we need to add on that? Alright, great. Um, okay. Town Hall and Public Works upgrades. Um, Julie, can you throw up six and seven or at least and uh photo six?
I haven't gotten down to the town garage yet. I the lights.
Have to do it this way, sorry. Let me uh
Okay, so that's okay. Yeah, just uh scroll up in that email. Or try to explode that picture, the top one.
Or the bottom one. Looks like it, either way.
Okay, just wanted to give you guys a reminder of, that's what we started with. Remember that? And look it, it's done.
Oh, the backsplash is done too and the other cabinet is in.
Everything is done. It's about time. So uh, I just was very, very happy with this. I think we had an original estimation of about forty-five thousand. We came in under thirty thousand with everything. The electrical was a little bit more than what we had bargained for.
Go to Lowe's?
Yeah, they still owed me some favors, Russ. So that's a, that's a one and done. But uh, it's definitely uh more suited to the town hall. It's not damaged and horrible. And now there's just so much space. So it's, so it's great. And I just, I'm happy to cross that off the list. We are done with the kitchen.
It looks beautiful.
Very, very nice. Um, and then uh if we can go to pictures one through five. I'm like a kid, sorry. And this I would love to do in that order, Julie.
Well, this is a little bit different because it
Okay.
Okay, this isn't what was supposed to happen. They were nice and small. Oh.
Is that present or is that past?
Can you do um just a uh, the minus, like a command with a
No, when I make it smaller?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, wait, maybe, oh.
Yeah, do you see?
Okay, so, that is the before.
That's fourteen percent.
Yeah, now you should be able to scroll. Are you gonna go down to the next page? Okay, so that is what it looked like a couple of weeks ago. That was just the uh sheet rock going up, uh tape. Uh, it just uh started at that point. Wanna go to the next one?
Oh my
That is what it looks like now.
Wow, it looks like a gem.
That's awesome.
Amazing, right? So
You can see. Oh my gosh, they can actually see.
Yeah, those are twenty-eight thousand Lumen lights. Those were all installed by Paul Swanson and Mike Foreman. Uh, we had ended up doing all the electrical ourselves. If you'll notice, there's the new uh six-foot fans. Uh, the air mover fans that are in there. Can you go to the next picture also?
Is that
Um, which you'll notice
Ready to fall down?
I know, he just walks around. He's so excited. Um, if you look in the back, you'll see those brown boxes with all the yellow labels on them. Um, I had Larson products come in.
Oh, I see.
And uh, those are all screwboxes and all. I I've been touring some of the other public works and they have all, all the supplies they need. You know, if they need a a a clevis pin or something, it's all there, whether it be metric or universal. If you look over to the left in that same picture, see the old card catalogs? That was our old sorting system. Um, that's actually what we're removing. Those uh had come from the building before this building was actually built. Um, so all that stuff. Also, if you look uh to the side of the uh 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 those tool cabinets towards the back, there's a new shelving rack. There's about six or eight, I believe now. Uh, steel storage racks that are all new to the back. Um, it's just amazing. Go to the next picture. And if you'll notice that shop light, I think that's forty-eight feet long of uh just one connected solid beam of a shop light over it. Um, the guys are super excited about it. Um, I'm super excited about it. Uh, and then, um, so I just
Probably probably got a, got a side of a lot of OSHA violations.
We're getting there. Actually, if you go, uh, I I believe two pictures back, Julie, Julie. If you'll notice to the left, all the way in the corner by the garage door, there's a new um spill containment system that we also upgraded.
Yeah.
Uh, ours was an old box. Um, so now this is actually something that we can do. Um, also in this picture, you'll notice uh the next, the all more, more racking. Um, because all that racking is new to the back. I didn't wanna put everything back on what was old. So now we're going through sorting it. Um, and start to kind of define the space a little bit more. Um, but the guys are are super happy. It's night and day from what it was. And I wanna thank you guys for supporting me in all of this.
Oh, yeah. I just remember taking that tour first thing and I thought, oh my gosh, this is a dungeon, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There wasn't a whole, like even at this point, we're not talking about a huge financial investment at this point.
Yeah.
Um, we've, because we've been able to do so much ourselves, right? To still think we're below twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, that's just great.
Everything all in.
Great.
Um, there was new lighting in the offices put in. Um, it's just, uh, and I have garage door. The rusted pot panel on all those garage doors has been reordered. I still have, uh, so when they put that on there, they'll put in uh new gaskets all the way around the doors.
Yeah.
Um, and then we can start working on other stuff and, you know, so uh that kind of wraps it up. So uh, thank you very much, Julie, for sharing those.
So will the uh, was the bathroom painted or is that gonna be?
No, none of that. So what happened is all the shelving units are in now. They're, we're still putting this together. This was literally
That's right.
Other day. Um, we have to get them, the the supplies out of the bathroom and then I'd like to build some walls and and make there a private bathroom stall, um, and more of a locker room where people can put their stuff, their lunch, their whatever. Um, and make it actually as a more of a room like it was meant to be. So
Yeah, I forgot about the storage of the stuff in there already.
Yeah, all that stuff's got all the filters and everything. So, you know, we we have gotten rid of a lot of stuff that didn't need to be there as we're cleaning it all out, which probably should be done at least once a year. Just goes through, see what we need and and where we have it. But now that system is set up even for tools. Um, we have a replenishment system now where this vendor's gonna come in and just stock us up as we need. Um, there's one other thing that I I uh I did get for them is uh we're gonna have our own uh hydraulic hose maker. So we can replace hoses ourself. So in the wintertime, we don't have to go to Napa and when we blow a hose, a hydraulic hose. Um, that's gonna be life-changing down there. Um, that's really a game changer of what we can do. Uh, especially in an emergency, in case of having, you know, a truck down because you have a hydraulic line leak. Um, which happens kind of often. Now we can just make it right there. So pretty excited about that.
That's great. The hose and then the crimping and the all of that.
Exactly, exactly. That, I'm hoping that's gonna be in next week.
Okay, that's good.
Um, actually, you know what? I I skipped something on the agenda. I skipped D. I have to go back to D.
That's because you were so excited.
I was too excited. I was all excited to show the pictures. Well, nothing else. I'm enjoying this. So uh, thank you for doing this and giving me this opportunity. Um, okay, so I uh this, you know, Governor uh Lamont announced, um, it came out on the nineteenth uh of September, uh thirty-one point three million dollars in state grants to seventy-seven small towns. You guys remembered I had applied for some grants uh back in August. Um there was about five hundred thousand up and everything had to be shovel-ready. Um, so I already had the plans for several other things. So I I did put in um, a two hundred thousand dollar uh request with a forty thousand dollar match from the town uh to pave around Town Hall and Public Works. Um, we put two hundred thousand in state funding plus matched by fifty thousand for the replacement of the bridge culvert on Squire Road. Um, also another hundred thousand for rehab and improvements on Public Works Building. So it'd be eighty thousand in state funding with a twenty thousand dollar match from the town. We received all three grants for a total of four hundred and forty thousand dollars uh in things that we
Get that two percent.
Thanks, Ross. No, but uh it was my first time with a grant. I wasn't sure how it was gonna go. Um, so the good news is, um, and we're gonna probably have to move some money around and it may have to go to a town meeting because we had, you know, ARPA funds uh that were put into Squire Road. So we're gonna have to reallocate those funds. But now we can work on more. So I'll get to bridges and culverts next to, but everything at Public Works plus a lot more um, is 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 gonna be covered. Squire Road is covered. Um, and now the paving, we only had forty thousand in the budget for paving of Town Hall and Public Works. Now that's enough. Um, so it kind of just worked out great.
That's fabulous.
Yep, huge, huge for the town. Um, okay, so let's get to uh, oh, and we also got the the new conference chairs. Also a super, super deal.
Yeah, they're coming.
So on to uh bridges. No, that's, that's me being uh frugal. Furniture store in West Haven. Um, and
I might go there myself. It just
Just got a super deal, you know? It was a super, super deal. So, you know, I I if we could get it, then great. Then if it's worth it, then it's worth it.
I mean, it looked new, so.
I know, yep. Well, we did some cleaning ourselves. I went through and dry cleaned them all. Um, but again, a little bit of elbow grease and we saved thousands and thousands of dollars. So it's definitely a win. Um, okay, so bridge and culvert updates. Um Davenport, I finally have a confirmed date of October twenty-second. Um, they have asked that they start working on Saturdays as well. Um, they have to be done by the end of October. Um, that's been a delay after delay and I have a hot, a solid date and we don't see any reason to to go farther than that, uh, which is great.
Yeah.
Um Botsford, uh, Mark Murray is doing an amazing job.
I saw it this morning and I saw him and I said, great job because I I really hadn't seen, and he was just taking forms off and stuff when I went by.
Yeah, he he rebuilding the cement surround where it was broken and taking, literally taking the the whole bridge apart in pieces. Um, what he ends up, went to them doing is uh they they dug down on either side of the road. I'm not sure if you've seen what he's been doing because he wanted to get behind the wall uh to replace the concrete behind there. Um, this is Um, this is, uh, honestly a solid, solid job and we've saved that bridge. Um, and I would like to, uh, consider doing more in next year's budget. Any of these granite bridges that we have, I've brought them up before. Um, now we will have the money to allocate to those, um, like Judd's Bridge over Battle Swamp, Shalabees over Roxbury Brook. Uh, we have to look at Apple Lane, uh, Century Hill over Moose Horn and the Bacon Road Culverts, which Russ always reminds me of. Um, I can't wait to do those next year. Um, so that's where we're gonna be kind of, uh, kind of looking. Uh, the bridge survey did start. Um, so now we're hopefully completing all the rest of those surveys.
Okay.
Uh, I meet next week with, uh, Cardinal and we're going to revisit the Minor Bridge Culvert also. Um, and hopefully get that out to, uh, bid again, but we've been planning that and that for a little while. Hopefully the prices come back a little bit better. Um, and then. Think that's the only bridges that we have at this point left for this year. Um, budgets and capital expense. I think we kind of just went through just about every project. Kim?
Yeah, um, I have a neighbor told me that there were their engineers looking at Hemlock Road. Um, was there, was there somebody looking at the, uh, repairing the sidewalls on Hemlock? Like she noticed, but I didn't know if that was on the, I know we had talked about it.
We had talked about it. Um. I'll make sure that's revisited.
Yeah, just take a look only because it's, it's kind of dangerous because if, you know, if someone slides off, they're gonna go right down into, into the river.
Okay, got it.
And that happened when, it might've been during, uh, Ida. Um, the, uh, there was a, uh, Beaver Dam and the water filled up and let loose and broke through and went over the road. So it had made some, broken through some of that.
Darn beavers.
Those beavers.
And they never get a, they never get a wetland permit.
No, they don't. They should be arrested.
Yeah, that's kind of a thing out here. I, 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 I will say, being in this position, I didn't realize the, the drama behind the beavers.
Oh, yeah, a lot of, lot of drama.
I, I won't get into it, but they are, they are resourceful things, aren't they?
They are.
To put it nicely, um, okay. So I don't have much for, uh, budget or capital expense. Uh, cause I think we just kind of went through all the money that we're spending and, uh, it's been fun. Um, fire marshal report for September, uh, extremely quiet month inspection. He did it. She did an inspection for Mine Hill Distillery for their state liquor permit, which was due. Um, there was a Knox box removed at a home at, uh, Good Hill Road. Luckily they gave it to the town. So one thing, you guys know what a knock box is? Where a fire department can get into a building and there's a key inside. I always had it on commercial buildings. Um, we have one here. One that we'd never had was for public works. And that was, that was a discussion that we have to get one. Uh, luckily there was one that we knew that was coming down. Janet dropped it off. It is now installed on public works. So if there was ever an incident at public works, the fire department can get right in because now we're all on the keefah. Um, and then there was a, there's a, uh, fire drill planned for the library in the month of November.
Okay.
Um, resident trade, the state trooper, resident trooper report, um. Two criminal, non-criminal investigations, seven and seven accidents investigated, six infractions, eight warnings. Um, probably not enough and a hundred and ninety-four miscellaneous requests for service. Uh, notable, uh, events scams are on the rise. So please remind residents that if it's too good to be true, it's likely a scam. Um, and remind residents to report any suspicious vehicles immediately. We've had a couple of reports of specific, uh, suspicious vehicles. Pulling into driveways mostly later at night. Um, and then I have an update. The car cameras were installed on eight thirty-one twenty-two. And the body cameras will be installed on October twelfth. And then after they're all installed, they'll receive, uh, an assigned body camera entry. Um, so we're finally moving forward with that as well.
Okay, great.
Um. Other business.
I just wanted to, um, publicly thank everyone involved with the tractor parade. So wonderful. Uh, Erin Foreman and her crew did an amazing job. And it was so well attended. I was a little concerned first thing in the morning and then Patrick, you sent out the text.
Yeah.
Just came in droves and, uh, it was just fabulous. And the weather wasn't that great. But they were all out there having a good time and, uh, it was really great. So.
Looked awesome. And Kim, Kim, thank you for stepping in. I had to be in quarantine at the moment. So thank you for, uh, stepping up. And I'm sorry that I missed it. Everybody said it was great.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. I had fun judging. It was, it was a hoot.
That is one of the cool parts of the job, Kim. I gotta be honest.
Wish you were there. It's too bad you were sick, but.
I know.
It was fun. It was fun.
I need to protect the town though.
Yes, Russ and I got to hang out at the fireplace. So that was awesome.
That's awesome. Oh, great.
Just want to mention that I think Hodge Park is misunderstood. I've, I've read the letters to the editor. And I don't think people understand what we're trying to do as a board. We're not trying to keep people out of there. Um, we need, our first, uh, objective is our safety of people. And what's been going on there on holidays hasn't been safe. Not only for the neighbors, the river, but for the people. It's just too overcrowded. There's no control.
Yep.
And we did what we had to do. It's nothing to do of with the type of people going down there. If there were a bunch of Italians. I would go down there and slap them all in the head and say, you can't do what you're doing. It's not right.
Agreed.
You know, you're, you're putting waste into the river. You're going on other people's property peeing. And this isn't a, a park that could handle ninety people. It just can't. And it's on a busy road. So we did what we had to do. Some people were upset that we took down, that we put, I, I'm not sure. Whether that we put up Spanish speaking signs or whether we took them down. I'm, I'm, I see when people use the word racism, I get very confused on what I'm supposed to do.
I had the same thought, Russ. Yep.
English is the language in this country and if putting them up was being a racist because, so they would understand to be fair to them. Then, uh, then I'm sorry, but that's not racist. And to take them down so that we don't, uh, focus on one group. I'm sorry, what do you want me to do? So we, we, I think we did the right thing. Um, I love Joan Temple. She wrote a great letter and I, 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 I plan when I see her, talk to her about it. Cause people really aren't educated on what's going on down there. They think we just did this out of the blue. That we just took it over from the state.
Yeah.
We put up signs to keep people out. Roxbury residents only. And that's not the truth at all.
And I think, you know, one of the, uh, really the reason why in our newsletter that we've been sending out, you know, through, um. From the town on Fridays, um, added in, uh, a location for people to look up what's taking place on boards and commissions. So that they can see the minutes or watch the video and be educated on what's taking place. Because that came up in our July or August and September meetings and the process is very well outlined and, uh, and covered. So just encouraging.
A lot of thought.
Do their research. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to say that.
Yeah.
Well said. Excellent. Okay. It is seven forty. Russ, getting better.
Yeah, you are. I just want to remind you, I'm leaving for Nashville tomorrow. I'm sorry, I can't be at the meeting for Wellers Bridge Road. You know, I would be, but, um, and I'll be back Sunday, probably with a hangover. Sorry.
Have a blast. Well deserved. Well deserved, Russ.
Have fun.
I will. Uh, so I, I'll make a motion to, to, um, to adjourn.
Uh, second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you guys. Take care.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night, Julie. Thank you for being here.